For meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome all those that are in attendance tonight and also those that be viewing the meeting on G-10 television. We're going to begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Logan Sosa, followed by our invocation by John Carter, the City Attorney. Please rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, as always, we give you thanks. We give you thanks for this beautiful day and for your blessings upon us individually and upon the city of Jacksonville. We pray for peace. We pray for peace in Ukraine and we pray for the people of Ukraine. We pray for our service members and their families. We especially remember those service member families of the former Marines who lost their lives in Norway. We pray tonight for the family of Carl Beecham, who passed on Sunday on his birthday. We pray for his wife Nancy, for their children, and all of his brothers and sisters. Former council member and a community leader. Heavenly Father, make us always to know that you are always present in our lives, not only at the mountaintops but in valleys. And we pray that you would be with all of these that we've mentioned this evening, that your presence may be known in their lives. We always pray for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction would always be with them. For all this, we ask in your holy name. Amen.
This time, council, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Next, we have a public comment for the evening. This is general public comment. This is not associated with any agenda item particular for a public hearing. Did anyone sign the sheet? Madam Clerk?
I'm just going to do this, sir.
Since no one has signed up, we're going to move on to the adoption of the minutes from the March 8, 2022 meeting and the three consent items that are on your agenda. So move for adoption of the minutes and consent items? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. We go down to number four under Public Hearings. This is Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, and this is dealing with fences under Article 5, Development Standards, Section 5.4. Jeremy Smith?
Agenda item four is a staff-proposed. Fast forward real quick. They've got them in reverse order there. I didn't see it up there, so I can walk you through this. So this is a proposed UDO text amendment for Article 5 Development Standards, Section 5.4, fences and walls. Currently, the way the UDO allows fences and walls for residential and mixed use is if it's in between the home and the street, your fence can be four feet tall. If it's behind the home, the front wall of the home, it's a maximum of six feet. So if it goes beyond anywhere that your home's on the property, it goes down to four feet. We're proposing to change that for corner lots to allow six feet tall fences up to the corner side setback. That way, it'll give folks a bigger backyard on those corner lots that are already penalized for having a double frontage. There are a lot of folks like that ideal corner lot, but you can't expand that fence currently. So what we're proposing is to change the ordinance to allow six-foot-tall fence between the home and the corner side setback. Generally, the corner side setback is 15 feet in most, if not all, zoning districts. The Planning Board reviewed this proposed amendment to the UDO last Monday night, and along with staff are recommending approval. That the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest. I'll be happy to answer any questions as you have.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Smith. Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to recess the regular council meeting and open up the public hearing that's required in this item here. Is there anyone present wishes to speak to this Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider this text amendment to the UDO.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion that we approve the UDO text amendment found in Attachment A.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carries. We're going to item number... Request for a special use permit for a Type III site plan. This is for a U-Haul self-storage at 6930 Western Boulevard. Jeremy Smith is going to present this item. Yeah, let me do this first before we bring anybody up to the stand. Members of the council, after I open this public hearing up and prior to any testimony being taken in this matter from the public, I want to inquire from each of you whether anyone has spoken to you in reference to this matter, and if so, who spoke to you and what did they say. Additionally, I would like for you to state if it is so, that you can disregard that information and base your decision solely on the evidence received at this hearing. And I will start with Mr. Warden.
Mr. Mayor, I did have two contacts on this. Mr. Ray made a comment to me, and I told him before he got started that I could not discuss with him, so no particulars were discussed. And then last night, I believe, I found out that Mr. Fountain would be representing one of the parties, but again, no matters were discussed, no particulars, so I can hear all the evidence without prejudice.
I guess by chance Doug LaZon called me last Thursday to express his condolences on the pass of my mother, and during the conversation, he mentioned that the Planning Board had approved or recommended the approval of the site amendment. It's not going to be a factor.
It will not be a factor. Dr. Washington?
No, sir. I have not spoken to anyone.
Okay. Mr. Sosa?
I do sit on the Planning Board, so I did hear about this before, and so I did know Matt Ray did, you know, he's on the Planning Board, plus he's a Realtor for it, and I spoke to Steve Wangren in the past, but I feel like I can make a clear judgment.
I briefly, well, I got a message from Mr. Sewell, Billy Sewell, but there was no conversation really, and I could make a decision without prejudice.
Last week, on Wednesday, I was at a meeting of the Board of Directors, and Mr. Richard Jefferson asked me if I was familiar with the proposed public hearing for the City Council, and I said I was not, and he expressed concern that the development would not be consistent with the city's long-term goals. I advised him that he should have representation at the public hearing to make sure their issues and position was stated. Other than that, that was the gist of the conversation. No promises made, no promises given.
I was contacted by two individuals. Both of them are friends, but I was contacted by Mr. Beecham, Fred Beecham, who I've known for years and years, played golf with him a lot. When we started the conversation, when I realized what we were going to talk about it, I believe I told him, and I think he will verify, that I told him that he needed to stop worrying about that, that he, you know, he needed to make his inquiries to the city manager or someone on staff to get information. And the other contact was with Richard Jefferson and basically told him the same thing, that, you know, there really wasn't anything I could discuss with him because it is a quasi-judicial matter, and therefore, there was no discussion. It turned to golf at that point. But in response to that last question there, would I be able to disregard any information I received and base this solely on the evidence that's provided? I guarantee it. So that's not a problem. So with that...
The public hearing and take Mr. Smith's testimony.
So at this time, I'm going to recess the regular council meeting, open up this quasi-judicial hearing, and first up will be a staff from staff, our senior planner, Jeremy Smith. Jeremy, do you swear that the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, Agenda Item 5 is a special use permit and Type III site plan for a proposed self-storage facility, a U-Haul brand at 6930 Western Boulevard. Before you on the screen in your prompters is the aerial view of the site. You'll note across Western Boulevard is undeveloped property. To the west is the Autozone. To the east is also undeveloped property. And to the north, and while the aerial is dated, that is the River of Life campus. This is the zoning map showing the same uses and that all the surrounding uses are zoned corridor commercial. And before you is the site plan that was presented to the TRC, has been reviewed, and I will go over the specifics. Amerco Real Estate Company has submitted a special use permit and Type III plan application for a proposed 135,000 square foot self-storage facility located at 6930 Western Boulevard. It's an 11 and 1/2 acre tract zone corridor commercial, and within this zoning district, self-storage facilities are a special use. The current development is located in the city's ETJ. They are currently undergoing the annexation process. We received the application on January 21. The Planning Board, Advisory Board reviewed it last Monday night at their regular meeting and have recommended approval. The design professional is Mr. John L. Pierce. Staff is recommending approval of this request with two conditions: correct the site plan, revise the site plan to meet some minor TRC comments, and successfully go through the annexation process. Again, city staff and the Planning Board are recommending approval of this request with the two conditions specified in option two, based on findings of fact A through G being found in the affirmative. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Smith? And to reiterate, you said all eight factors have, findings of fact must be present, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, I would, let me read something for you real quick so we don't get out of sync here. This is a public hearing. It's required in any quasi-judicial matter and also in legislative matters. And in this case here, you know, we swear to testimony. It has to be sworn to under oath. We're going to have speakers come up now, and you're asked to come to the lectern up here on this side and to clearly state your name and address so that the clerk can properly record that. Also, each speaker will be allowed only one opportunity to speak, so please make sure that you organize your thoughts before coming up to the podium. We've allotted a maximum time of three minutes per speaker. Is that satisfactory to the council, or do you want to consider something different? Okay. We request that groups designate a spokesperson to address the group's concerns, and in the interest of time, we ask that if another speaker has already raised the point that you want to make, that you don't repeat yourselves. So with that, who wants to go first? You swear the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
I'm Brian Jarman. I'm with John Pearson Associates. He cannot be here tonight. He's Chairman of the Board at Jones Onslow EMC, and they're having a meeting currently. I'm going to keep it short because there's several other people that want to talk, but I'm going to reiterate some of the stuff that Jeremy said. We have addressed all UDA requirements and city staff comments. Planning Board has unanimously approved this plan, and the site will meet all applicable city standards. If you have any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Jarman is representing the firm of John Pearson.
I have a question for you, sir. So if the storage unit is built in front of the church, the church has no problem with that storage unit being directly in front of the church?
Ma'am, I don't believe so.
Anybody else? Anybody else? State your name and address.
My name's Steve Wangren. Address is 105 Whitby Court, Jacksonville, North Carolina.
Okay, so that's where you're in now.
Okay.
You swear to all that you just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, as far as the information you're providing? Thank you.
Okay, three minutes. We were told we didn't have a timeline, but we'll try to do this in three. So again, I'm Steve Wangren. My employer is Coastal Bank. I'm Executive Vice President there. We purchased the property that's adjoining this over here in 2019 for our headquarters building for Coastal Bank and intended to invest about $4 million out there on that site with the headquarters building. We've already spent time on plans and drawings and engineering. I have these, but I'm not going to walk around. I'll take my time, but these are renderings of a nice commercial building appropriate for that site, and we've invested quite a bit in doing that. I do have those as a handout as an exhibit, Mr. Carter. In doing so, when we bought that property, the broker and the seller represented to us that future plans for the remaining property that you see with the U-Haul facility was actually proposed for shopping center and retail. This was what was provided to us when it was done, and one of those parcels was under contract at the time, but that must have fallen through. And as a result, we're sitting here today where the intended use was to be in harmony with what we were going to build or and still plan on building on that site. Additionally, in our purchase contract, the seller pushed upon us 12 contractual use restrictions as what we could do on our property. Those were things like adult entertainment, tattoo parlor, billiard hall, things that shouldn't be there. But Item 4 and 5 on there was an establishment for sale of automobiles, trucks, mobile homes, recreational vehicles. Item 5 was mobile home, trailer court, labor camp, junkyard, or stockyard. I would point out to you, 105 recreational sites on this particular plan. It's no different than an establishment for sale. They're renting U-Haul trucks. They're going to park campers, boats, recreational vehicles as part of this plan. We were restricted. They're not. That does not meet the intent of what is in harmony with what's supposed to happen. That's part of our contract signed by the seller. Additionally, I think you will all could drive around town and see, I got a picture of the U-Haul site right down here on 17. What happens on these storage sites is you get containers, you get mattresses, you get things that get thrown out of storage units that junk up a place, and we feel like you're going to see that at this site right next to our significant investment. Additionally, if you go on the whole corridor of Western Boulevard and Western Extension from Lejeune Boulevard to Gum Branch Road, there's not a single mini-store site on the corridor. They're all located one block off the corridor. We think this doesn't meet that obligation. And then finally, your site access right here, that's our entrance to our site. That's their freight and recreational vehicle entrance. That's 18-wheelers. That's a loading dock. We're going to be in their freight entrance when they have a retail entrance on Western Boulevard that we're denied because of our access to the intersection. Again, we don't think that fits. So for all those reasons, we believe this plan does not meet Item F, that the development is compatible in harmony with the adjoining land uses and the development pattern of the immediate area. We strongly feel that. And then when you take all those items in consideration, we think that it harms the value of our site as well. And with that, I do, I have somebody else, and I'll end my comments there, and introduce Mal Garland, who is here with us tonight to speak to the value comments as well.
Who is your seller? Excuse me? Who is your seller?
Who's the seller? The seller that sold to us was River of Life Church, who's the same seller and owner of the property next door to us.
Mr. Wangren, can you repeat? When did you purchase, when did your company purchase this land?
In 2019. Let me, I don't know the exact closing date, but our sales contract, I do have that, it was, the sales contract was entered into and signed by everybody in July of 19, and it was later in 19, could have pushed into the beginning of '20, but I don't know the exact date.
March of 2020?
March of 20, March of 20.
March of 20?
Yeah, March of 2020.
Any questions for Mr. Wangren? Thank you. Let me call you back up just real quick, Jeremy.
Oh, Jeremy?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Washington has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When did we change our UDO again for this area?
April 2014. Or are you talking about the amendments for self-storage?
Amendments.
That was last summer, I believe, around that time. Also, we had a rezoning for the same property in August of last year.
Got a letter sent out in...
Yes, sir.
On that?
Yes, sir, for the rezoning, yes.
The evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Malcolm Garland. I live at 2402 Marsh Turn Lane, Morehead City, North Carolina. For the last 20 years, I have prepared commercial and residential evaluations for a number of community banks. 15 of those years, I managed the appraisal section for one bank, approved, reviewed, appraisers and appraisal work, commercial and residential. Prior to that, I was a CEO of a commercial real estate development company. We developed over 2 million square feet of office and shopping centers. Prior to that, I was a division manager for predecessor bank of Bank of America in the commercial real estate division. I've been involved with community banking, and I particularly have a heart for community banks. Y'all are blessed to have a bank headquartered in Jacksonville, North Carolina, because research shows that a community bank is an economic driver, particularly for small businesses. There were 11 others, too, in eastern North Carolina. And so a site that can be a headquarters would be something that would be very favorable to the bank. Prior to my work, I've been on the board of five different banks and chaired three of them, so I understand the importance to a community bank, but primarily the last 20 years and 15 before that has been in the real estate business. After the Marine Corps, went to college, it was 1965, everyone running for a reserve unit. I joined the Marine Corps, served in Vietnam, was a platoon leader. This always happens to me when I talk about Vietnam and leading my Marines. These buttons are from Marine Corps officers, dressed blues. Just pardon me. There, got that out of my... No, I need a tissue, please, Mr. Garland. After the Marine Corps, I did my MBA in finance, and so that's my background, that's who's speaking to you. I would like to speak just very briefly on item, Statement of Fact Number E. Steve has mentioned F, which is it in, is it in harmony with the adjoining properties? I noticed in the staff report that unknown was what was stated, I believe, for the bank space. But as far as a statement of fact of value, office, retail space in a corridor as, and I'm very familiar with, with, most of my work is in Onslow as well as Carteret and Craven County, southeastern North Carolina. Office retail space compared to, and particularly what this site plan does to the site, will diminish the value of this property by as much as one-half. And highest and best use is what an appraiser looks at, tries to see what is the highest and best use of a property. The highest and best use of the property is now been, is now changing to more office industrial, and if you want some ballpark kind of number, and I'll end with that, the bank paid $350,000 an acre. I think office industrial is more like $200,000. So to me, there's a clear negative effect to the bank, never mind the effect to the community of driving headquarters of a community bank, which you should cherish, into a negative position. Any questions? I'm sorry, that's your job. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's fine.
Got the Marine and be kind of...
Right down what you just said. Any questions?
I just, I have one. Did you say you were an appraiser, a commercial appraiser?
There's a statement called, no, I didn't. The inter-agency statement on appraisers states that a bank can do internal real estate evaluations or can use outside appraisals. I am an internal real estate evaluator. My work has been reviewed and approved by the FDIC and also the Office of Commissioner of Banks. I do internal evaluations for my bank clients when the rules allow them to not have to use an appraiser, but I review appraisers' work.
So has your bank broken ground yet on this property?
Ma'am, I work for a number of banks. Coastal Bank is one of the banks I work for, but I wouldn't defer that to the...
The answer is no.
Projected date?
We have a projected date. We are working on our, we still have, we still, we still have architectural plans to complete and engineering plans. We have done soils evaluations, because on a site like that in the building we're talking about, Bob knows this, you may have to build it on pilings. It's, so we're going through all the planning stages to do that. We're not plan-ready, bring a permit here to the Planning Board to build at this point, but our intentions, we've already spent quite a boat of money on plans and engineering to get from point A to point B.
How much have you spent? How much have you spent?
Approximately, how much have we spent? Seventy, $75,000?
I have one last question for you. You indicated that the access road that the U-Haul company would be using, which is on your property, is that correct?
It's, this, this, this is the, I don't want to call it a service road, but this is the road that loops around by River of Life that comes off of Western. This, when we bought the property, we agreed to a 30-foot, I think it's 30-foot, might be 40-foot, but an easement. So, so this, this road kind of lies half on our property, half on what is the River of Life's property, is being proposed for this. And if you look at this site plan, to me, this is their commercial freight entrance, that's a loading dock, these are 18-wheeler trucks, that's an entrance to 105 recreational vehicle parking spaces, whether it's roofed or not, I'm not positive, then outlined with many, outdoor mini-store spaces. But this is where all the heavy trucks and RVs and campers and trailers and their loading dock, and to us, this is their retail entrance for, for other things. So, this is very commercially driven, right beside our facility.
Out of curiosity, she asked you about the amount of money that's been sunk into that property already. When do you project the submission of a site plan? Do you have any idea?
That's, you're asking me something I can't really answer, because our Board of Directors is, is, is who I answer to, or I answer to the President, Mr. Jefferson, and he answers to the Board, and the Board, that's the Board's decision when to pull the plug and, and invest the money, and I, I don't have an answer to that, and I'm not so sure Mr. Beacham can answer that, because, again, it's a, it's a vote of the Board that pulls the final trigger to submit and, and invest the monies.
Any examples of a negative impact to other banks concerning some type of...
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir, I, I have not got a presentation, it would take a lot of detailed work to do that. I have researched a number of industrial office, industrial sites, and I've researched warehouse industrial and, and office retail, and it's a substantial difference in the value between the two, and that was what I was basing my comment on, because this will now be more towards warehouse industrial. I would say that, it's my experience, that property adjoining a large 115,000 square-foot facility like this has a use, but not for our headquarters of a bank, be more of a, it could be some kind of a convenience store kind of use or something like that, but not what the bank has paid for it, but certainly a study like that could be done, but just my experience and, and just seeing the surrounding of this site by, it's very hard, I don't know if Mr. Wangrum has provided photographs of a similar site that's outside of New Bern, but it, it really is, I'm not trying to use polite words, but it's a monster. And it will have a draconian effect on a use that is other than a similar kind of use. I'm very surprised it's located in this place, outside of New Bern, in an open area, and the same proposal is, if you're familiar with outside of Morehead City, Hibbs Road on 70, they're open areas, is more appropriate, in my opinion, for, for something like this. Please don't tell my platoon sergeant I got wobbly. Brains don't cry, but sometimes our eyeballs sweat a little.
Fully understand, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have another question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
With the testimony that Mr. Wangrum just gave with regards to that entrance road, and with me reading Letter D about the development, street, driveway, parking area, traffic control, is, is this in supportive to what Mr. Wangrum is saying, is that that's going to have a deleterious effect if this building goes up beside the bank?
I do, I am not, I cannot speak to that, I do not know the effect, other than that this use meets the standards of the ordinance that are set out.
Okay.
And that its use as proposed would, is, the facilities in the area can't accommodate what they're proposing to do there.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I've got a question. So, the covered spaces in the back are going to be for strictly storage of these RVs? Or are they going to be...
For large vehicles, large recreation vehicles.
They're not going to be occupied?
No, not at all, no, sir, that is not...
It'd be just like a storage...
Correct.
They're covered then, correct?
It will be covered as proposed.
Will they have doors?
It will not, won't be an enclosed facility, it'll be a large...
Carport?
Yes. Canopy, and we do have canopy standards, so it can only be so tall, but tall enough for their, what they want to store there.
I did have two more questions. So, I see there's a lot of landscaping around the whole property, minus on the bank side, so why not landscape requirements there? And what kind of wall is being proposed to protect the bank and the U-Haul place, so they're not, to have a little bit of a buffer?
So, they have extra landscaping because of the storage area, that's the, and they can allocate it how they see fit, propose it to staff. The dark gray areas are all the proposed landscaping. Between the undeveloped property where the bank is proposing to go, there is the standard four-foot perimeter along that property line, and around the storage facility will be the smaller storage pod, uh, storage that we, that we've traditionally seen, and then a combination of opaque fence to screen in that storage area. Did I answer that?
Kind of, so they're not, landscape requirements along that wall right there? And how big is that wall going to be? Is it a solid wall, or is it...
Around the storage area?
Or just where the bank and the U-Haul...
That, that is not a required fence, it's just vegetative, I'm sorry.
And my other question was, the entrance, I know Steve has mentioned about the only entrance to the bank was in the back, so there's no way they could have an entrance in the front? Are they too close to the intersection? I mean, I know what you said earlier, but I just wanted to confirm that.
From my understanding, when this site plan originally came in, U-Haul was proposing two driveways. D, NC DOT said, no, you, this site's already been allocated. From my understanding, and our Transportation Services Director here, he may want to add to it, Western Boulevard Extension is a controlled access. The driveways are already determined by NC DOT, here's your driveway, that's where it's going to go. There is a lengthy process they have to go through if they want to change that.
For a long time, I'm assuming?
As far as my understanding from NC DOT, that is, that is the case, yes, sir.
And let me clarify that, those driveway locations were established by the DOT before any proposed uses, so it's not as if the driveway location into the proposed use was based upon a site plan submitted by U-Haul. And again, that's the reason why, because it is a limited access facility, you can look at all the undeveloped property on both sides of Western Boulevard, the driveway locations have already been established by the DOT. Now, the other point, while I'm, while I'm addressing you, remember, as a special use permit, you can establish additional conditions. So, as Jeremy has stated, the thin, what appears to be a thin, dark line between the U-Haul facility and the bank, that is proposed to be vegetation. If the city council believes that that should be something other than vegetation, then as a condition, you have the ability to establish that. You know, it just, once again, it's not like a standard zoning hearing, you have the ability to establish additional standards if you so choose.
Thank you.
So, following up, I'm sorry, following up on what he just said, that's not going to be a barrier? The place is not going to be secured? I mean, people are going to be able to walk onto that?
Because the zoning is the same across, in this whole area, this, the corridor commercial...
That from the, the U-Haul's side?
Right.
I mean, they, people could walk to the back of those RVs, conceivably?
The RV area will have a fence around it, a combination of the fence and single-story storage facilities. I don't, I do not, let's see, there we go. So, this area right here will be fenced in or also cordoned off with these one-story storage buildings, which are your traditional self, self-storage facilities, but they're interior to the site, and they'll also act as a barrier to that vehicle storage area.
Do you have an example of a rendering, or can you get an example of a rendering of a similar site?
I did have a rendering that was supposed to be in the slides, but I do not believe it made it into the slides tonight. If media would like to find that, that is in the council agenda file under planning slides, they may be able to add it in. But I do have a rendering of what the building is going to look like.
Could you put that slide back up, please, the site plan? This may, this may be a little premature for, for the bank. Steve, would you mind coming back up, please? Do you have an idea, I know it's early, do you have an idea where your, your access would be to, to your bank, bank property? Would it be back off that back, that, that, that easement back there?
When you come in here, the bank would be sitting here, our drive-through would be in the, the back of the building, so it's going to loop, if you will, so that, if there's a circulation somewhere like this. Parking will be up here on the front of the building, drive-through in the back, with all the traffic's going to have to circulate for our customers out that access.
Okay, so you would, you would potentially have at least one driveway off that access road, off the service road?
Potentially up in here, Bob.
Somewhere, and then, and then probably...
Comes in, a drive-through, and it comes back out that way.
Would you tie into the, your road up top, or would you be sure of that? I've just, just...
We have to tie into which road? This road?
Their, their road, their access road.
That's what I'm saying, that, 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 the, the site plan we have has, has a driveway coming in here to get to the front of the bank, and the drive-through comes through here, and then all the traffic circulates back out here.
Back out, back out the one that's...
Back here, and, and it's part of the sales contract, and, and the planners will know this, but there'll be some sort of transportation study done, but there will be a red light.
We will have a signal, okay.
This, whatever happens here will dictate this, and in our contract, there's a, a cost-sharing agreement on how this red light is paid for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Matthew Ray, 212 Bishopsgate.
Swear that the evidence you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self, God.
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Thank you for your sacrifice to the city and what you do up here every, every day. I also sit on the planning board, I've also served on the city environmental and appearance board, on the city Board of Adjustments, I'm the incoming chairman of the Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development Committee. I eat, sleep, breathe commercial development in Jacksonville. I do nothing else, that is what I do. I, I own property, near this property, right down the road, that I'm greatly looking forward to the increase in value that this development will bring. I know as a fact, as a local expert, that this U-Haul facility is nothing more than a giant benefit and example of positive growth to our community. Tonight, you have a ready, willing, and able buyer in U-Haul, and a ready, willing, and able seller in the River of Life Church that would like to see this project go through. It has passed the planning board unanimously. Your own city staff has recommended approval of this U-Haul facility. I'd also like to point out that as I sit on the Joe Ed Board, which is the Jacksonville-onslow Economic Development Board, we fight daily to get industry just like this one into the city of Jacksonville. There are communities who are fighting right now to get U-Haul into their community with incentive packages and, and the likes. So, this is nothing but an absolute positive for this community. I have here as an exhibit that I would also like to present, is an AMI Board Certified Commercial Appraiser, Suzanne Nelson, who is also a local commercial property value expert, that states that U-Haul meets all of these requirements and is in harmony with the development in this area, and will not alter the bank's value at all. And I'll present those as exhibits. I, I'm here to answer any questions, but U-Haul has fought this fight for over a year now, and has it all come down to this, and they have passed every single roadblock and complied with every single thing that the city has wanted and asked them to do. We went to planning board with unanimous decision for approval with staff recommendation. I ask for your motion tonight to, to approve this special use permit and continue economic development Jacksonville, in a city that this needs to be a priority in. It's been a priority for myself and my family for many years, and I, I would hate to see that go by the wayside, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Council, any questions with Mr. Ray?
Can you go back to the slide, Jeremy, to the, the map?
Before he goes back, this is the rendering that was supplied by the applicant that we labored to pull up for you.
Oh, sorry, you can go back.
That's all right.
The slide or the map?
That one right there. So, Matt, are they, as U-Haul, the developer, the builder, whoever's doing it, would they be open to modifying plans if needed to, you know, make it all work? So, my thought was, you know, just like in the housing world, you can flop plans. If, could they flop and put the warehouse, try to trailer entrance on the opposite side, they still have the top-left corner, there is an entrance to that service road where trucks could go in, because they could enter from Gum Branch from Western, and they could pull down and use that loading dock side on the left side away from the bank, so the bank, you know, wouldn't have the traffic with trucks and everything as well? Would that, do you think they'd be open to that?
I can't speak for U-Haul, they have their own representative here this evening.
Oh, they do, okay, I didn't know that.
But I would say that throughout this entire process, they have come to compliance with all of these city requests, and I'm certain that, that they would do whatever they could to, whether it be a buffer or a...
Does he need a swear? Sorry.
Please.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut out.
Jason Harden.
You swear that the information you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self, God?
Yes, sir.
Now you can give your name and address.
Oh, okay, Jason Harden, 2530 Post Oak Lane, Gastonia, North Carolina. So, I'm a 24-year team member with U-Haul, we're a 75-year company, we run it almost like a family company today. You know, we, we spend a lot of time looking at this site, we feel like this would bring the most value to the, the community, it would bring value to the military, we're, we're very close-knit with the military, we do a lot for them, partner with them in many places. It's a modern facility, it's, you know, one of the things I keep hearing is industrial, industrial. 24 years, we're not industrial, it actually hurts me to hear that. My wife shops at U-Haul, your wife shops at U-Haul. Seven out of 10 women are our customers, and that people want to stick us in an industrial area. It's not where my wife wants to shop. She wants to shop where retail is, because we are retail. I'll answer any question I can today, we have full board approval, we're 90-plus percent with our site plan approval. I was hoping to have a land disturbance permit within the next month. I've got architectural EMP already fully engaged, so, I mean, my plan was to move forward and help create jobs and create something for the community, so...
I'll get back to my question, though. Would you guys be open to flopping the plan?
I would, that would have to go back and talk to the Board about that. We've been at this, feels like a year now, almost. Me, up until last week, I'm, Jeremy can attest to this, we, we continue to give and give and give...
we continue to give and give and give and change the plans to try to meet the needs. At some point, we just get tired. It feels like it's uphill battle at this point. So...
Let me address that. Would you mind? Okay. Would you put back up the graphic of the site plan, please? Okay. The difficulty, when the staff looked at the site plan originally... Why don't you have a seat?
Oh.
There you go. Thank you. When the staff looked at the site plan originally, relative to transfer trucks, we did look at the other end of the building. The difficulty is, we do not want the transfer trucks exiting directly onto Western Boulevard. Why? Because if they're headed to Richlands, you come out on Western Boulevard, everything is good. But if you're headed back towards New Bern, you're going to have to go down and make a U-turn and come back against it. Whatever site plan, from the staff standpoint, we want the transfer trucks to come back as shown on this graphic. Now, where they unload, that's up to whomever. But we want the transfer trucks to come back to this side road so that they can come to Western Boulevard at a proposed traffic light, and that would make a more, if, bad grammar, a more safer, boy, that's really bad grammar, that would make a safer transition point for those transfer trucks. So from a staff standpoint, where they put the loading and unloading dock, we'd be pretty flexible with.
I guess my point was, they could come out that back entrance and then loop around to the light.
You're talking about the entrance that's up there where it says 6930 Western Boulevard?
Yeah. They could come out there, take a right, go down the service road to the intersection to go left or right, and not have to do any U-turns.
That's certainly true.
Yeah.
And one thing that you might consider there is whether they would even give up this access point that's mutual. But that's really something that, but I wanted to make the point, from a staff standpoint, we want those transfer trucks coming back out at the red light. Thank you.
Ask a question of the U-Haul representative.
Yeah.
Have you had issues in the past with homeless possibly staying in your...
We don't tolerate homeless staying in them. We don't allow residential use at all. I mean, do we have, anyone had issues? Of course, there's been issues, but we address it very quickly.
How much security do you, will you have?
Oh, it's, I mean, it's top-of-the-line security. 99% of the rooms are indoors. It's climate-controlled, controlled access. The RV's controlled access. I mean, we take security. I mean, it's going to be my wife's stuff, or someone's wife, or sister or daughter's stuff in there. We protect it.
Is it 24-hour access, or do you have a certain timeframe?
There is potential for 24-hour access. We do screen it. There's not everyone needs 24-hour access, but we do offer our standard hours, which is 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for access into the storage. But again, it's all controlled by cards, swipes, camera systems. So it's full, I mean, again, it's state-of-the-art security.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy, back to the podium, please. Is there...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just in case, hypothetically speaking, if council was to approve this, and then U-Haul decided not to go through, they wanted nothing to do with this project, and they wanted to sell the land, could they sell the land with that special usage permit, already permitted for something else to be in that, or would they have to come back to council again?
So, and Mr. Carter may want to back me up, but the use runs with the property. So whether it's U-Haul or another storage facility, if the special use permit is approved, it is approved for that additional use of self-storage. So another company could, if U-Haul decided to sell it, another company could come in and develop with a site plan that would have to come back in front of this board unless they developed it just like this site plan.
And the site plan is good for how long, Jeremy?
There is not a condition right now. The site plans are good for two years. They can get extensions for site plans, two extensions, and then after that, it would have to go back through the approval process. But it would come back to this board as a site plan with an approved special use permit, which I believe is ministerial at that point. Thank you.
Who'd like to speak next? Sorry about that. Do you swear that the information you're about to provide is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
I do.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Louis Rogers. Address is 309 Brunswick Drive, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28546. Good. Well, I'm a citizen of Jacksonville, and I'm here as solely that, a citizen. And what we've seen as far as growth within the last five to six years has been tremendous. I wanted to go over a couple of those things. We've seen, just within the last two weeks, 11,000 residential building permits that have been requested, and that comes at the county level, obviously, but that's 11,000 permits that was requested for Jacksonville. We've also seen an increase in our schools in Onze County with the addition of five schools that have already been approved for funding with the extension, or excuse me, expansion of Jacksonville High School, which was a $500,000 proposal that just got approved last week. We've seen an influx of military personnel in the community, most recently Marsoc being expanded here. The Marsoc unit in San Diego, I believe it was, was just recently closed down, and the remaining of their element was moved to Jacksonville. So we've seen that expansion as well. We've also seen PNC Bank, which is actually on Western as well, navigate the same way as we would expect other banks to do the same, with Subway, them sharing a parking lot with Subway, as well as Gold's Gym. And then most recently, we've seen you guys do one of the most amazing moves that I've seen city council do by approving the production of the sports complex. I believe that was one of the most advantageous opportunities that you guys did. And the reason why I say that is because with what we're projecting to see in Onze County, actually just Jacksonville, just with that one single move, we know what's coming to Jacksonville. You guys would not have approved that had you not have seen the potential of Jacksonville. As we discuss this purchase with U-Haul, we know that it directly reflects exactly what it is that you guys stand for as far as growth. And we're looking at military personnel. We're also looking at retirees that are moving into Jacksonville as well. So I come here today in support of what it is that you guys have done in the past, as well as what we're seeing here today. And I just wanted to say that as a citizen here in Jacksonville. I believe that purchase of this property is fully in line with what the council has done before in the past.
Questions? Thanks, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Looking for more speakers? Anybody? Call it out one more time. Anyone wish to speak to this matter?
Mayor, I have some clarification points. When you're ready for those.
I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter.
I'm sorry. Which do you prefer?
Those points need to go into the record, Mr. Carter, from the manager.
Yes, I mean, I don't know what they are, but...
They definitely need to go in the record.
All right, we'll go ahead and...
Reopen the hearings.
Reopen the hearing.
And let's get this in the record, too.
I'll do the testimony, too.
You swear that the information you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
So help you God, absolutely. Richard Woodruff, 101 West Railroad Street in Jacksonville, the city manager. Couple of things I do want to make sure council understands. A special use permit is a contractual relationship. If you approve this, the documents that you have seen on the screen here, and the next document I'm going to ask the media to put up, which is the graphic of what the facility will look like, would you please put that up? This is what has to be built. Now, I agree 100% with Mr. Wrangham when he says that when you look on Highway 17 at the storage facilities that have been built in the past, the city staff does not support that being built here. And let me show you what we've done. A year ago, U-Haul came to the city and wanted to put up a facility. We did not like the fact that our regulations were so loose, and we have now changed those regulations. You, as a city council, voted and amended the unified development ordinance so that you could not have anywhere in Jacksonville, again, other than a true industrial site, what we currently have on 17. The picture that you see here, if you approve this, this is what U-Haul is obligated to build. And I want to address what Dr. Washington asked. Zoning approvals go with the land. They do not go with the owner. So it doesn't matter whether U-Haul builds this, or they sell it to someone else haul, or three men and a truck haul. This is what has to be built. And if it is not built within the...
Two-year period?
The two-year period, the site plan expires. So it's very important, I know that we do not deal with quasi-judicial hearings very often, but it's very important to understand, this is not typical zoning. In a typical zoning, you make a corridor commercial, and there are 100 uses, and somebody can stand in front of you and say, "I'm going to build the best whatever." After they get the zoning, they can build whatever else is left in the zoning district. An approval of a special use permit is specific. It locks in everything. I also want to go back to the point that Mr. Sosa raised. If you're concerned with the issue of the compatibility buffer between the proposed bank and this proposed facility, you have the ability to increase those standards. The other thing I want to point out from a traffic standpoint is this. From the 10th edition of the ITE Trip Generation Manual, and that's what we use in planning, that's what the DOT uses, that's what our transportation department uses, the U-Haul facility did not meet the minimum trip generation to require a traffic impact analysis. Now, one of the things you have to decide is compatibility. I'm not going to tell you it's compatible. I'm not going to tell you it's not compatible. That's for you to decide. A bank with a 24-hour teller, according to the manual, will generate 119 peak hour trips. This facility, according to the same manual, will generate 54 peak hour trips. I cannot stand in front of you and say that the bank, when and if it's built, will not be required to do a TIA. What I can tell you is that this facility did not meet the minimum standards of the city, nor the minimum standards of traffic generation for the NC DOT to even have a traffic impact analysis. The last thing I will say is this. Any issues, which I believe are valid issues, having to do with contractual relationships and promises or obligations that were made in purchasing or selling property, is not your concern. Those are civil matters. You have to judge this based upon the eight criteria. I'm going to read those criteria. A, the proposed use is designated as an allowed special use in the zoning district. City staff found yes. B, the development complies with all applicable standards in the special use. Staff found yes. C, the location and character of the development conforms with all city adopted plans. Yes. D, the development's streets, driveways, park areas, traffic control, and any other traffic circulation features are designed or provided in accordance with current traffic engineering standards and relevant city regulations, and will be adequate. Remember, that standard isn't about how it impacts or shared with someone else. It's about, does it meet the city standards? We found yes. E, the development will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. We found it, it did not. You have to decide based upon the testimony that you heard. Some said it will, some said it won't. That's going to be one you're going to have to wrestle with. F, the development is compatible and in harmony with adjoining land uses and the development pattern of the immediate area. City staff said yes. And I'll remind you of the picture that they're obligated to build. Alas, the proposed development will not materially endanger the public health or safety. That's the reason why we come back again to our insistence that the semi-trucks, we do not want them exiting on Western Boulevard. Now, I know that the attorneys would like to make some closing comments. One other thing I would like to mention is this. A special use permit is a contractual relationship. Any questions you have of me, of comments that I have made? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd just leave the hearing open, even though the next two persons who will come up will not be sworn because they're attorneys. You're sitting as the judge and the jury tonight. That's why we call it quasi-judicial. There's an attorney here, Mr. Keith Fountain, from Lanier Fountain, Saruzian Sabah Law Firm that represents the bank, and he wants to make a closing argument, so he won't be sworn because he's not given testimony. We also have Mr. Jonathan Uri from the New Bern and DeSelm's Law Firm, who represents the church who is selling the property, and may also represent the applicant. But each one of these gentlemen would like to make a closing argument before you, and they have decided Mr. Uri would go first.
Want to start by saying thank you, Mr. Carter, and thank you, council, for hearing us tonight. I know that this is an important issue to everybody here, and I just want to essentially address, again, the legal obligation here tonight. There are eight factors that are under consideration here. Nothing outside those factors is under consideration. You've previously made the legislative decision to zone this area corridor commercial, and within that zoning, the use of a self-storage area is a permitted use along with a special use permit, which is why we're here tonight. In order for us to receive that special use permit, we have to meet these eight criteria that were just read through here, and it would be my contention tonight that based on the staff approval, based on the testimony you heard here tonight, that we have met each of those standards. There are really only two, possibly, but one standard I've heard anything conflicting about tonight. The one that has received the most attention, to my mind, is number E, that the development will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. Now, you heard tonight, Mr. Garland for the bank, propose that this will diminish the value of the bank's property next to this 6930 Western Boulevard property that we are requesting the special use permit for. He speculated that, based on the traffic here at the top, where you see the easement that they've agreed to when they purchased this lot, that based on that traffic, that based on the kind of development, a self-storage area, that the value of this bank's property would diminish, would devalue. You also heard from Mr. Ray that, in his experience as a commercial real estate broker here in Onslow County, that is vast, that he owns properties himself and develops properties himself here in Onslow County, that in his experience, this project can only increase the value of the surrounding properties, that this property will inject value. And indeed, I would propose, although I am by no means an expert in this area, that injecting a large amount of development funds and capital into a property can only raise the value of the surrounding properties. With that conflicting testimony in mind, it's ultimately up to the council to make the decision which portion of that evidence is more favorable, which portion of that evidence means more in this debate. I would also point out, though, that Mr. Ray submitted a signed, sealed statement from an Onslow County commercial appraiser, Ms. Suzanne Nelson, that states that, in this case, the impact, or the development of the 6930 lot as a self-storage area will not significantly devalue the neighboring property owned by Coastal Bank. I would ask that you take that into consideration as well as something that has been proposed and that should carry some weight, I think, because it was put forward by someone who is a specialist in this area and who knows about how valuations of property work. The only other issue that's really been discussed at length tonight is whether this development is in harmony with the surrounding area. And one of the things that's been harped on, it seems, by the people testifying on behalf of Coastal Bank, is that the access here would cause harm to the ability of Coastal Bank to run a business here, that the type of people who would use this self-storage area would cause harm to the neighboring Coastal Bank lot, that the storage itself would somehow cause harm to the neighboring Coastal Bank lot. You've also heard testimony tonight, specific testimony, on the nature of this development, that it is a self-contained development, that the container units in the building are enclosed, that the RV storage, and it is just storage, it is not residential in nature, nobody's living there, you heard testimony to that effect tonight, that that is also enclosed by a fencing area. Certainly, we can't speak to the future. I can't sit here and tell you that nothing's going to happen that has been put forward by Coastal Bank tonight, but I can tell you that the U-Haul facility has been designed with maximum security involved, and you've heard testimony here to that effect tonight. I would also point out that we have a site plan, a rendering, a proposed development in front of you now at this hearing, and that Coastal Bank has yet to even propose a site plan for their development. They have yet to even propose anything that's going to be built on that lot. They have a plan for the future, and they've spoken tonight at length about their agreements when they purchased this property. But I would reiterate that those agreements are outside the pale for what you're to consider tonight. Those agreements have no bearing on whether we have met these standards. I would also point out that there's been some question brought up as to whether we are in harmony with the surrounding area and the surrounding community. I appreciated the gentleman earlier who spoke about the way that Jacksonville is growing, because it is, it's growing. I used to live up on Western Boulevard in one of the apartment complexes near Carolina Forest, and I can tell you that for the people living in those apartment complexes, there's not a whole lot of space to store anything. A storage facility of this kind would be very useful. I can tell you that right down the road from this storage facility is an AutoZone auto parts shop, that there's a CVS further down the street, and that going this way towards the bank's lot, it's mostly undeveloped right now until you get to those apartment complexes. You've heard testimony tonight about the need for this facility in Jacksonville, about how this can only help the people who live in Jacksonville, and specifically, the middle, lower-class people who are living in those apartments, most of them, who need a place to store their personal belongings, who work with U-Haul in order to move in and out of places like these. I think the last thing I would like to point out, because this has been brought to my attention, and it's something that I just wanted to make sure that we hit on before I relinquish the stand here, is that there's been some question about whether a use restriction in the contract and restrictive covenants for this property not to sell vehicles would prevent the leasing of vehicles on this property. I just want to make sure that I explain that a sale is completely different from a lease. A sale of a vehicle requires an exchanging of title. It requires passing of ownership. A lease of a vehicle, that vehicle is still owned by the original party, they're allowing someone else to use that vehicle. In the Jacksonville U D O, it actually stipulates that for a self-service facility of this kind, leasing moving vehicles and trailers is a permitted accessory use for a self-service facility of this kind. And so I think from that perspective, if there's any question brought up, and again, I'm just addressing this because this is an issue that's been brought to my attention prior to now, I believe that if anyone were to use this facility for leasing, it's clear under the U D O that that is a permitted accessory use. And you've heard testimony tonight that nobody is selling anything out of this facility, and nobody's selling a vehicle out of this facility. With all that said, I would say again that I believe we have met the standard of evidence, the burden of proof tonight. That is just a minimal showing for each of these factors, that we've met each of these factors. And I would ask that you approve the request for special use permit and that you would issue that special use permit for this property. Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm Keith Fountain, attorney here in town, and I want to talk to you a little bit from the other's perspective. I know that you have heard throughout the planning board approved this unanimously, but guess who was not there? Who did not even know about this adjoining property owner? We never were aware any of this was occurring until we received a notice a week ago, as was stated by Mr. Garland. If you want me to get specifics, I may be able to do it, but, you know, we haven't had time to do that. We received our notice one week ago of this hearing, and we've tried to pull together what we can in this short period of time, where Coastal Bank has made a major investment, and we're planning on making even a larger investment for a community bank that serves this community to have such short time. I think they've done fairly well trying to pull it together, but that's the burden we found, is they've talked about, we've had a year getting this ready, and yet we've had one week. I think it is very clear here from the evidence in front of you, and they keep talking about this, that was not evidence in front of you. It has not been introduced, no one has testified to it. Only thing that you are considering here tonight is the evidence from here. We have with us Mr. Garland, who has been hired by banks to approve appraisals, to review appraisals. He is one that determines value, and he has testified very clearly as to the effect of putting this industrial use in the middle of the commercial corridor of the city is going to have to the adjoining property owners, and I would submit not only to the adjoining property owners, but for the whole of the area. You're taking a self-storage area, which is better served being in industrial areas such as Center Street, where there are numerous of them located, and they're all, and I understand there may be a need for this, but I think they're all full and are doing quite well. Why don't they put this back there? These other companies are not having any trouble putting those. It's just a location, putting it right there on the main commercial heart of this community. They're going to put up self-storage units. We're going to have 100-and-some RVs back here. We're going to have trailers. We're restricted contractually. We don't want that on your property, but we're going to do it on ours. And I think that shows the conformity to the standard of the community. They knew that this was not supposed to go there. The developer knew it was not supposed to go there, that that would hurt the value of their property. Why else would they put it in our restrictions that we can't have it there? I think that is a telling statement, that this really affects the value of the property, and the developer knew it at the time that they drew these restrictions up and placed them on our property. We have heard discussions that from the entire conformity of the, go up and down all of Western Boulevard, as was stated earlier, not a single self-storage area. We've heard that it is, I think word was stated in front of the church, I think it's more to the side of the church than to the front of the church. This, I submit, is not a proper place for a self-storage unit. There are numerous properties that are available for self-storage areas, other than being on the commercial center of the entire city. We have asked that you look at this, look at how these 18-wheelers are going to come in through the easement where the bank is located and using every day. Look at the, all of the units that are located up here for storage of RVs, boats, other items, and ask, is this really what we want on Western Boulevard? I would submit that it is not, that it clearly will affect the value of the adjoining property owners. And I just ask that you listen to the adjoining property owner as to the effects it will have on their property. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's appropriate this time for you to close the public hearing, and it's time for council to do their deliberations. I'd like to thank Mr. Uri and Mr. Fountain. I think they facilitated things this evening as far as making the evidence that was presented on point for council's consideration, instead of just having folks get up here saying it's a good idea, bad idea, et cetera. So I'd like to thank both of them publicly. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll just close the public hearing on this matter. All right, council will move for discussion on the matter. You can make a motion, whatever you want to do. It's up to you.
Do we have discussion before we make a motion?
Absolutely.
All right. Like probably every one of us sitting up here, I'm conflicted. I don't know how much it might harm the adjoining property. I'm not an expert in that. We've had conflicting information on that, so toss up as to who's right and who's wrong. There are a few things about this site plan that I know I don't like. Mr. Sosa pointed out the main one, and why I asked a question, Mr. Wrangham, that access road off the right-hand side with the tractor-trailer, so close to their property, I don't care for. I understand the need to get back to Western Boulevard, and like Mr. Sosa, I would prefer that the tractor-trailer access come in the very back end. Now, that may cause him a problem, they may have to flip the building, I don't know. But the other thing that I don't like is the lack of buffer between the bank and this proposed use. And if we eliminated that access road in the back, you could actually add some additional buffer along that side and then continue that straight down to the bottom of the map that we're looking at, the bottom of this thing. But it needs to be wider. It's certainly not wide enough, the one on the right-hand side, certainly not wide enough in my mind to screen what I would consider a very nice use for our bank headquarters there. I certainly think what the building they proposed is a nice-looking building. I don't know how, what the back of the site would look like. We really have no renderings of it, what that storage, covered storage looked like. But I think if we could perhaps move the entrance for the tractor-trailer, increase the width of a buffer between the bank and the storage area, I think would help. As to the rest of the issues that they've got with some contractual, that's, you know, I don't know that that would help. What we're proposing may not help and may not change the bank's opinion of what they've got, but that's neither here nor there. That's not our responsibility. I personally would like to see both uses, both buildings come to Jacksonville. I do have some reservation about next door to each other compatibility, but I think I could probably support it if I felt like there was enough buffering between the two. So that's all I have to say at this point. I'll listen to the rest of the arguments by our council.
I mean, I agree with Bob. I mean, like I said earlier, I think if they made some alterations, I wouldn't have any problem with it. The way I look at it, as long as they meet the criteria, they're allowed to sell the property to who they want to. And it's not our rule to say they can or cannot to an extent if it met all the requirements, which I think this does. I think if they move, like, the entrance for the tractor-trailers to get a little relief from the bank, and maybe do some buffer to that side where maybe both parties can work together on that, then I'd be fine with that. But as far as, for the most part of the property, I feel like they should have the right to be able to sell to who they want to and do that as long as they meet their requirements.
Well, I guess, you know, from my standpoint, I can appreciate what you're saying, appreciate what you're saying, what he's saying, what he's saying, but I don't think a tweak here and there are going to satisfy both properties, both people here. I've seen these kind of things in other cities where they are right on the, you know, Charlotte, places, you know, like that, bigger cities, right on the highway. It's a beautiful rendition, what they've got, what they'll have to build. And like I said, you know, I can understand us wanting to tweak it, but, you know, I've seen it since Thursday. You know, I don't think I've got the expertise, the wherewithal. I mean, they've had more than a year, I mean, 20-and-some years of experience. They know what they need, they know what they can do. We've allowed them, but they've gotten this far with it. In the second half of 2020, we approved exactly this, storage units in commercial corridor. I haven't had any problems, I haven't heard any blowback. I feel the manager has always referenced the attorney with consistency. And just looking at what we've done in the past, I think we would be consistent to approve this special use permit and site plan. And I'll make a motion that we approve the special use permit and Type 3 site plan with the two conditions found in option A, based on the signs of fact, A through G, being found in the affirmative.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Jackson.
I too would like to see, because I, I could understand how that could create a problem, that, that interest area where the, um, eighteen-wheelers can come in and, um, you know, where the traffic from the bank, um, that could, that could be a problem area. And I do agree, possibly if they could see how they can move that. I too have seen these work, and they didn't take away from what I've seen when I've gone to other cities. I wish this can be worked out between the two, but that's not my decision. But, um, with some changes, I would like to see this.
I know what you're saying, but, uh, there was evidence also given about the traffic light, you know, the safety of getting in and out of that, both of those properties. You know, I don't know whether the traffic light would go there if both properties aren't filled or not, you know? I don't know what the warrant, you know, how they do, uh, do the warrant on those traffic lights now onto a four-lane highway. Anthony? I'll let him be my mouthpiece here.
Good job, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Do I have to be sworn in?
Uh, public hearings over.
Public hearings over. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. So a traffic signal at this location is something that we've been talking about for a long time, not just because of what River of Life and other property owners on this side of Western Boulevard are doing, but what they're also doing or plans to do on the other side. As far as the signal decision-making, that's generally done by DOT, and there are eight different warrants. One or more of them have to be met before a traffic signal will be permitted to be installed. Long story short, about a year ago, we did a signal warrant analysis at this location. Based upon current traffic, it's not currently warranted. And I don't anticipate that it would be warranted based upon the trip generation from the U-Haul. However, as development occurs on both sides of the road, there most certainly will have to be a, a, a signal at some point in the future.
So both properties could build before a light gets put in, is what you're saying?
It's very likely that will happen, yes.
That road on the Sunday with River of Life Church exiting their, uh, congregation meetings or whatever, we have policemen up there now standing to get the traffic moving across Western Boulevard. So there is quite a bit of traffic being generated by that church.
Yes, sir. But the fortunate thing about that, and I'm not advocating here, the, the reason that that doesn't trip a warrant is because it occurs on a Sunday, which is typically an off-peak travel period. And yes, I do see Mr. Brown out there every Sunday directing traffic. Yes, sir.
Other discussion?
I'm kind of in agreement with Mr. Thomas's comments, and it would be nice if, uh, U-Haul would take it upon themselves to move that driveway a little bit, I guess that'd be north, and increase the landscaping between their property and the U-Haul facility. But, um, other than that, we zoned this property with facilities like this in mind, and I'm kind of looking at the findings of fact, A through G, and think they have been satisfied.
Other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, please. Okay, all opposed? Okay, all right, motion's approved.
Maybe we take a five-minute recess, please?
No recess for a few minutes.
We're back in session, Mayor.
If you would please move to the IT item. We will move past the budget topics, tentative schedule, and fueling. I recognize that you have an important closed session in a few minutes, so the tentative schedule and the matter relative to fueling will be covered, uh, at the next meeting, uh, which is one week away. Let's talk about business software. First of all, as the manager, I want to publicly thank you for redirecting us back several months ago. Sometimes when you have a mission, you try to find something, and when you find it, you think it is the best way. You ask us to go back and rethink. So publicly tonight, I am going to commend you and thank the mayor and council for your due diligence on what is going to be a major city expenditure. Based upon your direction, we did issue an RFP, request for qualifications. As you're going to hear in a moment, we had qualified consultants, we have a proposed fee that is going to result in a substantial savings. And the systems that we believe will come out of that are going to be something that will help the city for the future. Now, I promised that I wouldn't do this, but I'm going to go ahead and say it. At this time, I'd like to introduce a stand-up man. You're supposed to laugh about that. A stand-up man, Terrence Braxton, who is our IT director. And Terrence has promised me that he's going to be right here, that he's going to present this, and that he's going to present it all the way through to the very end. Now, Terrence has a retort to what I just said. So, Terrence, you're up.
That wasn't very kind. That was a lot to do. Well, uh, Dr. Woodruff, I appreciate you calling me a stand-up man. Uh, you've always been there to lift me up when I'm, when I'm falling down.
That's good, that's good.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Mayor, council, uh, first of all, thank you for, for, um, allowing me to present this to you tonight. What I want to do first is just give you a, an overview of our ITS department and what we, who we are and what we support. So our, our ITS department consists of myself and thirteen employees. We provide technical and GIS services to the entire city of Jacksonville, uh, supporting citywide. Even though our presence is, is here during normal working hours, we also provide 24-hour support, um, to whoever needs after hours. This is just a small staff shop of the support that your department provides. Our day-to-day operation includes maintaining and operating the network infrastructure, services, and applications to support over 2,000 devices within the city. Our cybersecurity is a key component of what we provide. With the support of a vendor that serves as our security operations center and internal hardware and applications, uh, we're able to monitor and defend our network, our data, and our information. The current system that we have, as you say, as you see, is a very complex system. Uh, the system's over 25 years old. Uh, it was good when we first installed it back there, but as I said, it was 25 years ago. So we're looking for something that's more robust and that can integrate with the needs and support the back, the information, uh, that goes back and forth. Uh, that right now is kind of cumbersome and doesn't support the, uh, city needs or the growth of the city. As you get, as I said before, it supports all the departments. So they're all tied in, integrated with one another. Over this last 25 years, we had to implement 39 different modifications so that those, uh, systems can talk to one another, and we provide that technical support. So while we're looking for a consultant, um, one, this is a total replacement of a computer business system. Uh, this is a major technological overhaul that we're going to have to do. We haven't done this in, like I said, 25 years. But it's also going to require a detailed business analysis to let us know where we at and where we need to be. We need to streamline our business practices. We need to integrate a system that shares information across all departments. And we need a solution that's appropriately sized to, for our needs, but also allows for growth in the future. And the last one that we talked about is, is, is the city staff operates, but we don't have the knowledge or the experience to design new systems, not, nothing of this, of this, uh, magnitude. So the bottom line, we're looking for someone to come in who has the expertise, the knowledge of new systems, and who can do this in a timely fashion for us. The knowledge and expertise is not organic to the city staff at this time. So what we wanted the consultant to do, what we did was we submitted an RFP. Uh, and what we wanted them to do is review our current city processes, uh, through fact founding meetings and interviews. Let us know what we look like and where we need to be. Identify, you know, our, it, our inefficiencies and all our redundancies, redundancies. We wanted the consultant to come in also and recommend new business processes. Uh, look at what our current IT infrastructure looks like and help us decide if this is what we need to do or what we need to do to grow our current infrastructure. And then finally, recommend a new system for us and provide us new process, uh, dealing with change management. That's kind of phase one of this project. Uh, the second phase of it is, is actually the RFP development and the vendor selection. What we have the vendors to come in or have the consultant come in and do is help us develop that RFP package. We know it's going to be very, uh, intense and time-consuming. And it helps us facilitate and assist with working with the vendor selection, with our scoring, the demonstrations, and then the reference checking part of the contract negotiation. So based off council directive, uh, we submitted the RFP. Uh, we, we started back in late December when we first advertised it. We gave it a submission deadline of February 1st. Uh, our selection committee went through and reviewed, uh, those proposals, gave it a score, and then we had a vendor interview, uh, back in earlier this month. And as of today, we come before mayor and council to present you with, with our, our As a result of the RFP, we had five firms respond with proposals. They all had various qualifications of what they can do. The fee ranges from $75,000 to $229,000. Our selection committee recommended that the firm, uh, that came in at $148,800 was the one that we selected. As we talked about before, this was within our FY22 budget of $250,000 for a consultant. Uh, substantial savings of over $100,000 based off of the, the, the due diligence that, uh, council told us to go back and look at. So our recommended firm was, was Barry Dunn. Uh, for them, they have many years of system consulting experience. Uh, they have worked with over 400 different local, uh, governments, providing consultation on system software implementation. They have worked with also, uh, vendors, over 20 different vendors, who also support the installation. Uh, they, and they have to understand the capabilities and limitations of today's systems. They're independent, so we don't, they don't sell hardware or sell software to us. And they have experience with Central Square. Switch, Central Square is our current vendor that we use for our system, so they have transitioned, uh, local governments out of their current, uh, Central Square contract into a different software system. Our selection committee looked at the experience, reference, and staffing levels of each of these. With the score that we have, we've all decided they were excellent, uh, had excellent results. They meet our timeline of doing this in about nine months. And the cost, like I said before, is $148,800. Right here, what we have is the project task and what we're looking at getting accomplished and, and briefing you on, on a regular basis of what we expect out of this, uh, this project. Whether we're working with the, the consultant themselves or the consultant is doing the task, uh, for us. All comes down to what we're looking for is to water bid and to procure a new, a new software system so we can start in FY23 or '24 with the implementation of that new So what are the benefits from this project? Improved business process and productivity, uh, effective, efficient, and economical. And then we're setting the sys, the, the business system setup for the future. So our options today are, one, concurring recommendation with higher Barry Dunn, or two, direct, uh, CMO to analyze and bring back another approach. CMO recommendation is to cur, concur in, in recommendation to hire Barry Dunn, and also in FY23 budget, assign a full-time, experienced city employee to be the project leader, and then use the balance of the FY22 funding to cover the costs. Any questions?
Well, the staff at this point, the staff at this point would like to give Terrence a standing ovation.
So, Terrence, when, when, when do you anticipate, uh, we're going to put the RFP out yet, right? Correct?
If you approve, if you approve this this evening, then we will move immediately to contractual, uh, con, to the contractual work and begin this work within 30 days.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, concur in the hiring of Barry Dunn and, and to move forward with, uh, assigning a project, project manager to, uh, to spearhead this thing.
Any discussion? Here, none of you in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I want to ask you one quick, or run one thing by you. I know in the news, the little news blurts I've been reading lately about the Russian cyber threat.
Yes, sir.
It's not just government, you know, or big government they're attacking, but it's also at local levels and businesses and that sort of thing. Are we constantly looking at our security as far as hardening the shell, shall we say?
Yes, sir. Uh, what we do is, like you said, we have a, a vendor who provides, uh, 24-hour monitoring service for us, but we also have layers of defense when it comes to, uh, our cyber posture of our network. Uh, we have a firewall also that, that protects what goes in and out. We also have applications at the user level where, uh, making sure that our, our updates are done, um, on time and correctly. And also with our training that we do with the, uh, cybersecurity training that comes out once a month, uh, just to see if anybody clicks on a link, uh, that's part of, of what we do to make sure that we're, our, our network is being hardened.
Are we soon done dating back up to Kerry?
Yes, sir, we are.
I want you to know that I went ahead and paid that invoice that I, that I got, uh, presented. So, so we're, 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 we're okay.
Appreciate it, sir.
We might want to include the council on this training.
Yeah, we want. But there's, there, there's been major cities that's actually paid ransoms.
Yes.
It seemed honest to me.
I think that was one of my best ones that we, uh, we pushed out during that time.
Gotcha. Thank you, Terrence.
Mayor, we would like, uh, and you may decide you want to do reports, but we do have a city employee who'll be retiring at the end of this month. I have a short video as part of the one city, if you don't mind, at a certain point before you adjourn to your closed session, uh, we would like to show that, so whenever you're ready, sir.
All means.
Ready now, sir? Okay, media, would you please roll this?
Winter months, and we have high rainfalls, we, we've noticed over the years. Winter months, and we have high rainfalls, we've noticed over the years.
Thank you. Thank you.
27 years, you say? He's been an asset, for sure. Let's go ahead and do the reports real quick, get through with those, so we don't have to.
I'm going to be here, sir.
Thank you, and appreciate your presence.
No report.
No report.
No report?
I just want to mention that Dr. Johnny Williams, who's been a long time, he was a gynecologist here, he's getting a National Medical Association, National Community Advocate Award. Most notable physician, community advocate in the United States recognizes that. He's done a lot of great things here, food drives, COVID testing, COVID vaccination, just an all-around great guy, major asset to this community.
Dr. Johnny is going to find him and then say that.
He's a great person.
Certainly is.
Reports.
Would that entertain a motion to go into closed session?
Submiss.
Second. Dr. Woodruff, I'm sorry, before we rule on the closed session, did you have a report?
No report, sir.
Okay, so the motion and second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.